You read the Dallas Morning News on Saturday?
Yeah. While we were in the streets.
Oh, so don't pay for it.
That's what they said.
Uh-huh. Right. But they're assuming.
(laughing). Do you feel like, do you feel like... Are you fast enough? When I park this thing down, she don't... He's got... No, I, I would... Well, see, I'm not... Right off. It's not over for some of them.
Five days. They're staying in the... Thank you. Hope to have a drink with you. Well, mine haven't... Well, that's... Where do you go? You know, you go first lot, go on. Yeah. Oh, I said, maybe go...
Well, probably. He is, okay, a big one.
Well, he was...
Oh, thank you.
Five, two. No, what he...
Don't let him show me.
Someone did, you know?
Well, I thought I had that.
And that was good. So, yeah, I think that we... Yeah, the, uh... The dog's... I don't know.
Yeah, he's sitting there.
They were...
Well, he's had these... Oh, well, he had... I think he would've been... Remember what he said? Remember what he used to know? He has one, something all right.
I wonder if we can... In point, I guess. I would say...
He was... Yes. He was... Yeah, he was... He was...
I have not...
(laughing). No. I like... We all... It was a shock. Too old. Yes. No, I... And I was good, too. Wow, I got to see it. Oh, that's all. Wow. Who are you, or something? Typical athlete. I just said, you got a lot.
He just...
That's why I'm a nutritionist, though.
Yeah. Not that there is...
Oh, that's...
Thirty-five.
Now, he's gonna have to take more than that.
I don't know what... My recommendation. Yeah, just let me know.
Good evening. And welcome to the regular town council meeting of the town of Centerville for June twenty fifth from the A P. This is the second town meeting of the month. The official meeting is tonight. Tonight, in location presented by county meetings in the city. But please join me in standing.
Dear Lord, we come before you humbly tonight. Thankful for the many blessings that you've given us as a town, for the resources you've given this town and the opportunities. We pray tonight, Lord, that as we consider and deliberate the issues before us, that you give us wisdom, that you give us discernment, Lord, that in all things we try to do what is best for the citizens of this town, and that everything that we may say and do may be pleasing to you. We pray for your continual blessings on this, continuous blessings on this town, Lord, and its citizens, its residents, its sole opportunities and its commercial opportunities, Lord. We just thank you for the faithfulness you've shown this town over the many decades, and we pray for wisdom as we try to lead and guide the town to continue down that path in the future. We ask all these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
At this time, may be called to order the regular town council meeting of the town of Centerville. Now time is seven oh two. For the record, all seven council members are present. The first item is the public forum. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, you can come forward and speak to the council on items other than personal matters or litigation. So if you would like to come forward and talk to the council, you may do so. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public forum. Council, we have one item on the consent agenda, that's the Department monthly reports May two thousand eighteen. Are there any questions on the report? If not, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda item one, that's the Department monthly reports for May twenty eighteen?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Finch.
Our second.
Second by Clark, to approve the consent agenda item one, that's the Department monthly report, May twenty eighteen. Everybody heard the motion? All in favor signify, all opposed. Motion passed seven zero. Okay, let me move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda, item number two, that is to discuss and hold a public hearing on the annual drinking water quality report, that's the consumer conference report. Uh, Mr. Johnny? Okay, come on forward. Good morning, good evening.
It's me, Brian. Uh, I'm Johnny's assistant director.
Hey, Brian.
Hi. Uh, every year, we, since the mid nineties, the public water systems had this consumer quality report. Uh, this year, there was nothing unique or distinctive about ours. Uh, we did send out a couple of public notices regarding some sampling, uh, that was missed in two thousand fifteen, and some reporting issues in two thousand seventeen, that I'd be happy to answer any questions about. Um, so other than that, there was nothing extraordinary about the report.
Thanks, Brian. Are there any questions for the staff at this time? Thanks, Brian, please be seated. Again, this is the public hearing portion of the agenda, so if anyone would like to, um, speak to the council regarding, I, you may please come forward. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Council, any additional questions? Okay? If not, can I have a motion to approve the annual drinking water quality report as presented?
So move.
Motion made by Ms. Ryan Finch, your second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen, to approve the annual drinking water quality report. Everybody heard the motion? All in favor, the motion signify, all opposed. Motion passed seven zero. Moving on to agenda item three, that is to discuss and consider first reading of ordinance eighteen dash twelve, an ordinance amending the town unified development ordinance, ordinance seventeen dash zero nine, duly passed by the town council on March twenty sixth, two thousand eighteen, as amended from time to time, so as to review and amend section three point zero four zoning land use regulations, specifically section three point zero four dot zero three use chart, as well as other associated sections, providing an effective date, providing for penalties, and providing a severability clause. Do you attend this over to Rashad?
Sir?
Yes.
Rashad? Mayor, council. Um, town, as we're all aware, the town coun, uh, town council recently adopted a unified development ordinance here in March. Uh, in comparison to the former zoning ordinance, essentially, the regulations are still in line with what was previously noted, um, but there are a few inconsistencies with the land use classification chart. One of those is the office use, which at one point, we had, of course, allowed in industrial office warehouse uses, but we've noted that in using the land use chart, that is not shown as allowed use, so I'd like to make that amendment. Um, in March as well, or I believe it was April, we did a review of the highway commercial zoning district. I just thought it would be a good opportunity, since we're doing this amendment, to review that again, just make everyone aware, uh, of the uses that were transitioned and uses that were changed in the highway commercial zoning district. Um, and speaking with that, uh, I spoke with the economic development director, Tracy Anderson, and she noted her conversations with town council and in the E D C, and noting that the highway commercial area, as we wanted to have some more entertainment type uses along that area, uh, that would be the Highway eighty corridor, Sunville Center, uh, the northwest corner as well. Um, and she noted some specific uses that were, uh, require a specific use designation. In many cases, you know, the businesses see that as an obstacle rather than, uh, something that would intrigue them to come to the town. Um, and with these specific uses that are in entertainment based, uh, we both felt like it wasn't a huge issue, especially in that highway commercial zoning district that is not abutting any residential, um, no, uh, and, and these type of uses are pretty much, uh, the highway commercial where it's located, uh, would be adequately located in these, in that zoning district. Uh, so I didn't foresee an issue. There was one, uh, the hotel, uh, we do have a couple of, um, people interested in hotels in specific locations, as well as, uh, I think she had noted, let me see here, uh, grocery store anchored developments. Uh, so, uh, just offer those up for review, the P N Z, uh, made, made a recommendation to approve the office, uh, amendment to the light industrial district, uh, and also the suggested amendments by, uh, the economic development director.
Council, any questions for the staff? Rashad, I have one question, so item number, the, under the, uh, economic development, uh, hotel, you have combined two items into one, three stories and, and, and four stories. When we combine them, is that, is the expectation clear, or do we need to break them into two?
Could, we could break them into two, uh, it, but I believe this explains it well enough, and it would be up to staff to, to follow through on it.
Since one is appro, accepted by, 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 uh, by allowed, right?
Right.
By right, one is, uh, allowed, especially if set up maybe.
I have no problem separating it, it would make it clear.
Okay, since the public hearing, I'm going to open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and talk to the council, you may do so at this No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Council, are there any additional questions for staff? Okay, if not, uh, this item will be, this is the first reading, this will be back on the agenda on July ninth. Sorry, Leslie, or Rachel? Okay? So meanwhile, if you have any additional questions or comment, feel free to reach out to staff and let them know your thoughts. So I'm trying to get my computer up to where I need to be. Okay, moving on to item number five, that's the, I'm sorry, item number four, that is to discuss and consider first reading of ordinance eighteen dash zero three, and ordinance amending the town unified development ordinance, ordinance seventeen dash zero nine, duly passed by the town council on March twenty sixth, two thousand eighteen, as amended from time to time, so as to review and amend sections three point zero four, dot zero four, dot A, dot nine, private club standards in section three point zero four, dot zero five, dot G, establishment selling alcohol beverages, as well as other associated sections, providing an effective date, providing for penalties, and providing a severability clause. Rashad, back to you again.
Mayor, council, on May fifth, two thousand eighteen, Centerville residents voted and approved on premise, on premise alcohol sales within the town. The approval allows for on premise mixed beverage sales without a private club membership requirement. Um, at this time, the unified development ordinance only addresses alcohol sales associated with a private club. Um, a private club is defined as a club that holds a private club res, registration from the Texas, Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission, the T A B C. Uh, private club registration only authorizes the permit holder to sell alcoholic beverages to members of its establishment. Each member or customer must pay a membership fee in order to port, purchase alcohol in the establishment. Um, the overall private club process, um, with this tidbit in it, uh, is seen as too tedious for most businesses, um, like your Chili's and whatnot. Uh, with the recent approval of mixed beverage alcohol sales for on premise consumption, um, the town process will be changed to allow for alcohol sales without a private club, uh, S U D requirement, and I'm suggesting that we change the title, just to make it more clear, uh, as establishments with alcohol beverage sales. I also noted that in our U D O, we currently have the requirements or regulations for, uh, the allowed use of a private club or establishments that sell alcohol. Uh, there, the sections are in two different areas in the U D O, not rather than be in one location. So we're talking about moving information, the distance requirements in section three point zero four, point oh five, point G, uh, to section three point oh four, oh four, point A, point nine, just consolidate it so it's in one location. Um, I also suggest, uh, additional amendments throughout to address this change, um, as far as it providing for a definition, as well as, um, T A B C with this on premise alcohol sales, they, uh, would require a food and beverage permit, um, if they would like to be a restaurant that sells alcohol or mixed beverage, um, and their requirements stipulate that the, uh, alcoholic, alcoholic beverage sales cannot exceed sixty percent of the gross receipts. I would like to recommend to add something in our regulations similar to that effect, or we could just reference that unless abided by the T A B C percentage, whether or not they changed theirs or not.
So what do you recommend, Rashad?
Um, I would like to at least see fifty percent in our ordinance, in way, whether they change theirs or not, we'll still have fifty percent requirement to avoid any situations like a bar, but I, that's kind of getting y'all's take on that as well.
What do, any idea what adjoining towns and cities do?
Uh, I've seen fifty, it fluctuates. Uh, I think Garland has a fifty percent. Um, I had, um, Eric, the town planner, do some further research, and I believe, what was some of the percentages that you had noted?
Can, can you come forward and, and talk in the mic, that's where people who are watching, the reduced in camp here also.
Sorry to put him on the spot like that.
Oh, that's fine, Rashad, Eric Billings, the town planner. I had noted several different requirements, most of them were at fifty percent, um, one of them was sixty, but I also noted that many of them just require that you sell, um, um, that you sell food, so food and beverage, um, but that none, that was strictly alcohol sales, so there's always that attachment to it, that food be served, and others, you know, it's, uh, as a private club, allow that food is brought in in order to serve alcohol, but that's another, another thing. Any question?
So the, to, to do this, it's probably cleaner, cleaner and easier for staff, that we pick just a percentage and then follow T A B C after that?
Yes.
Even though T, T, I mean, we can control less than T A B C, that's to, to whatever number we want it to be, and the reason for my question is to make sure that we're competitive in a marketplace that already has these opportunities available to them. Um, but after that, just to make it clean and easier for staff to monitor and control, uh, just follow T A B C regulations after that, does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Rashad, I have a question. How do you, how do you actually monitor fifty percent or sixty percent?
That would be, uh, we could have the, as part of the permit process for T A B C, they're required to keep record of their sales, and they're inspected by the T A B C. Uh, I do believe we also require them to submit that information to the town secretary as well. Um, so that's the way we, we would keep tabs on it, and if they didn't meet that requirement, we had the ability to revoke their S U D permit for alcohol sales.
So does T A B C require sixty percent food and beverage?
Yes, they, specifically word is, uh, T A B C stipulates alcohol beverage sales for food and beverage permit cannot exceed sixty percent of gross receipts of the licensed premise.
Sixty percent of gross receipts from beverages?
Right.
So that means forty, forty percent has to be food?
Correct.
So if, if T A B C only requires forty percent, can we override it and make it fifty? Or does state law override us?
That's a good question.
I mean, I thought it was always fifty, but I'm hearing forty now.
You, you can set your requirements where you want them, it's really more the definition of a club or a bar versus a restaurant, and that goes into the zoning use. Um, you're not really licensing them, so you don't, you're not going to be in direct conflict with T A B C. Really, you're just getting the information. They're going to turn their sales and everything else, and we can have a different standard, as long as we're not trying to under, we're not trying to undermine T A B C by saying they can't have a liquor license, we're just controlling the zone. If you do go head to head with them.
So if a restaurant wants to come in and T A B C, T B, whatever it is, only requires forty percent?
For that, for that certificate or that license.
Would we be successful in enforcing our? Would we be successful in enforcing our ordinance which says it has to be fifty percent?
I've always seen fifty percent on.
Me too.
I've always, anything, any alcohol sales more than fifty percent has been considered not a restaurant.
Not a restaurant, it's a bar.
Or something like that. We're pretty solid, I believe, saying fifty percent's a good number, too, to say, if you serve less than half of your stuff is food, I don't think you can really call yourself a restaurant. I think we're pretty solid on that. And it may be new, new issues, because I've always thought it was fifty percent by T A B C.
Maybe the same question. I, I always thought we could go stronger, just not weaker, than the state law. Just like when we come to some of these distances, if we wanted to make it stronger than what state law says, we're allowed to make it stronger, just not weaker.
As a typical general rule, yes. A lot of the alcohol rules have been kind of grandfathered in over time and...
I know it's a slippery...
The only time you can't be more specific is if you're going directly at the same thing, but we're not the licensing agent or permitting agent.
Right.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Typically, as a general rule, in most things, you're correct, alcohol.
Different ballgame there.
A little bit Louisiana laws.
Yeah, I got you, got you.
I do have one comment, or a couple of comments, actually. I see we defined a lot of things, like what is a daycare, what is a private school? I noticed we don't define a church, and I wondered if we should, if, because if you have a distance requirement from a church and somebody decides that they have a meeting once a week, if we should define that? I don't know what the, that may be just more comment than if we define it or not, I don't know what the norm is on that. That's just a comment for you to...
Okay.
So we mentioned church, but we don't define church.
Right, that's what I mean, is if somebody opened up a, if somebody had a building, all of a sudden they, like, like the funeral home holds a church service once a week there.
Right.
So is that a church or a funeral home? See what I'm saying?
No, I...
So establishment wanted to come in there, so we define it as a church or we define it as a funeral home? I don't know.
That may be the...
It's just a question, I, I...
And that, that may be the reason why it's not defined.
It may be, and that's, may, it could be.
I haven't seen that instance. What you see sometimes is if you have a strip shopping center that already has a liquor license in there somewhere, and then a church comes in and rents space, like a new church or starting off, that doesn't count because the liquor license is already...
Already pre, is grandfathered, basically.
And a lot of it, you get into what activities they have there. I've also seen it where church-owned property, where they planned on moving their facility, but they haven't built on it, haven't broken ground yet, it doesn't prohibit a liquor license within a distance.
Because not a church yet, right.
You just have to kind of get into the...
That's why I was just asking if we should, if we should put some parameters on, if there is a common law definition of what is a church? I don't know if there is or not, I just was throwing that out.
That's a pretty big bag.
Yeah, okay. I just, I was, it's fine, I was just, I see a Pandora's box here.
You look at the activities, because I've seen churches own old movie theaters or something that they just use as youth groups, but there's no...
Maybe it's the totality of use or something like that.
For an outreach service, but it's not part of their nonprofit status. Really where it comes down to is if they get the religious tax exclusion.
I got you.
And wouldn't it also be based on what the C O'd use for the property was?
Correct.
So the C O'd use for the property for the funeral home is as a funeral home, not as a church? So I think that that tends to help support...
It does, and sometimes churches are holding property for future expansion and they may rent it out to the strip shopping center, that's not a church purpose.
Thank you. Sorry to keep bugging on that, but, and one other question as it relates to, not necessarily to you, David, but just to Joe, sorry. As to the distances, I see we have three hundred feet from a church, thousand feet from a private school, and then it could be more distance if they, somebody objects to heaven or the, the board says something, it could be a thousand feet. I wonder if we shouldn't... I see that a private school can request a thousand feet distance.
Right.
But I don't see where a public school, where we have any, why would we treat a private school different than a public school?
I, I couldn't answer that. This is actually just carried over from the previous zoning ordinance, so I would say we could just stipulate thousand feet from a school.
I like that, not treat them any differently.
So if you do that, if you have, since you have public school, so they need to come back and request that? So who makes the request?
The way this is worded, the governing body, so that would be...
School board or...
School board.
So that way they can prevent future establishment from coming?
Either future or really it would be if they're noticed or they're made aware of the future development of a establishment that's going to sell alcohol.
How far is the direct south of development from the school?
I believe the town planner noted it as eight hundred. Eight hundred and sixty feet.
But in a door to door, it's, it's... So you're saying from the new development right here, next door to us, would be eight hundred feet from the school property line?
I haven't reviewed that distance, but Eric has noted that that was from property line to property line. And, but there are conditions, it says provided that such limitations shall not apply if less than fifty percent of the gross receipts from the business are derived from the sale or service of alcohol. And also if they were selling off premise consumption, so that'd be the difference.
Basically, a, a gas, convenience store, a gas station.
Right.
An establishment that's predominantly food-based.
That's where it would apply.
That's where it would apply.
Not a, not like what is potentially planned next door.
I can't comment on the exact uses that are going to go in next door, but to answer the earlier question, most from schools, it's lot line to lot line, as well as, I believe, a daycare. There's other cities do it even rehab facilities and things like that, so it'd be calculated from the corner of that property down the street, directly down the property line, directly across the street to the... S I S D owns the property next to the church on trip, so that's where I measured it out to.
And is it within three hundred feet of that church property line?
Oh, no.
Okay, so we're outside of that.
The outside of that.
I think if you make a thousand, then if the school request made a thousand, then certain establishments cannot come on salsa property, is that, is what I'm hearing?
Yes, you're correct.
A restaurant, a restaurant wants to open there.
And if the school board wanted to note at their opposition and wanted to ask that the distance be increased, they could.
Okay.
Well, what I was saying was...
Private school right now, yes.
According to this.
According to this, yes.
So I would, I would ask this question, since we really have never actually had to apply this rule in Sunnyvale, then it would make sense that they should both be the same, and maybe a thousand foot's not going to work because of this particular scenario. And in that case, the private school should be the same as the public school, there should be, I don't think there should be any separate difference between the two altitudes.
Make it three hundred.
Uh, feet.
Agreed.
Go down, make it three hundred, then. Just make it consistent, I guess, is my point in the ordinance.
Paragraph three, or, or little letter three there, only applies a thousand feet if they make the request.
Yes.
But it doesn't apply if they have less than fifty percent of the gross receipts are derived from the sale of alcoholic beverages. Or, in the case of the business, and read the rest of that, I don't think it applies here. So all they have to do is decrease their alcoholic beverages to forty-eight percent, and they can't, they won't be a thousand feet.
Yeah, it doesn't apply.
Doesn't apply, so...
So I guess the intent would be if there was a establishment that primarily drove their business from alcohol, we wouldn't want it near the school. We can increase the distance, right?
Right. So are we required to have that paragraph three in there?
I don't know if we're required, that's just what was originally noted in our regulations. I've seen that regulation before in other municipalities. So it's not something that's out of the law.
I think the thing that bothers us the most is it only applies to private schools.
Yeah.
It doesn't apply to prob, public schools, doesn't apply to daycares.
It seemed like we...
It doesn't apply to a hospital, either.
Mayor and council, if I may, it looks like that provision between the three hundred feet and the thousand feet is taken strictly from the T A B C code. It does have a separate provision for public schools. Let's see. So you could allow that for a thousand feet of a public school or private school. It does not spell out a different, or the option for public hospitals or churches to request an increase in distance. It strictly limits it to public and private schools. So if you wanted to follow the T A B C code, that would be my recommendation.
It could be public or private.
Public or private.
And I guess the point here is that we're not prohibiting an establishment that doesn't drive more than fifty percent, or less than fifty percent of their alcohol sales from being close to. I mean, they, there's no objection, according to the ordinance, as if somebody sells more than fifty percent, their main business is alcohol sales, right? So I don't have a problem with increasing it to a thousand feet if their main business is alcohol sales from a school.
So if that would make it a bar, we're going to allow a bar?
True. So maybe it's not existent in our current, the way we currently have it.
What would we do?
So what would we do if, two years from now, we find out some restaurant is over fifty percent?
They'd be open to getting their permit revoked?
By the town or by the T A B C?
By the town.
Town, so we can...
It would be their sales permit, their alcohol sales permit, it'd be their zoning, the zoning issue.
Their zoning.
It'd be a violation of zoning, you could pull the S U D.
Right.
So we do have some reason to, or something to do if they, they violate the fifty percent rule.
Yes.
Also, let's say if you put that in there as a condition on the fifty percent, on the special use, and then that first one fails and another one comes in, they can't, if they come in under the, the same old town permit, they still have to meet that fifty percent requirement. So it doesn't run with the property until it's amended.
So I have a question for you, what defines a private school?
I would just say a school.
Yeah, take out the word private.
I would take out a private, I would just say a school, because a lot of your daycares have a state-certified kindergarten.
T A B C defines it as... Uh, where'd it go? I just had it. Offers a course of instruction for students in one or more grades from kindergarten through twelfth grade, and has more than one hundred students enrolled and attending courses at a single location.
Is that a private school or a school?
That is private school.
Sounds like a school, too.
I'd just say school.
Yeah, I think you're right.
So if, if we were to put that at a thousand feet uniformly, do we have anybody that would be in potential violation of where we're at now, which would change the alcohol that we just talked about? Or do we have something planning and already, and planning zoning, or a proposed application that would be in conflict with what we're doing now?
No, I mean, we have, of course, Park Square Development, and I know there's going to be a restaurant there. But it's going to be a, a food and beverage restaurant, so...
Food and beverage shouldn't be a problem.
Shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, it shouldn't be a problem at all.
Because food and beverage is at least fifty percent food, right?
Right, we're going to have that stipulation the other way it goes.
It won't even matter.
Right.
For now.
Right.
I'm thinking down the road, when we don't know where another school might be or what might happen.
Yeah, I think our biggest risk is up on Belt Line Road, where we have numerous properties, where we also have numerous schools, in my opinion, churches, churches which have schools. That's potentially an issue, but we can't say anything's going to happen. We've got a new childcare facility looking at Sunnyvale, so I don't know where they're looking at, but...
But I think, I think where I get comfortable with it is it's, it's fifty percent, that, it goes down to that, that fifty percent where we don't, we really wouldn't want that other establishment anywhere near, right?
That's to be at least fifty percent food.
Right.
So I think my hangup is...
Well, they would, they would already be losing their, their zoning, they'd already have a zoning issue if it was past fifty percent, right?
Yes.
So it would, it would...
I'm not sure it matters, we may be semantics here, but...
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be an issue, just maybe move...
I would just like to, if we're going to do it, let's make it just schools and move on, that's what I, that's my recommendation.
I agree.
So let me ask this question, and it's why would, why would we consider a bigger restriction to a school, private or public, than we would to a daycare or to a church? In my mind, they, they serve a very similar purpose, but yet we're going to be more restrictive to one than we are to the other. I'm not saying that we shouldn't change it, I'm just asking, why would we change one and not change them all, one way or the other?
The T A B C distinguishes between churches and daycares and schools already and how you measure. Well, churches and such, you have to go door to door, there's a specific path you have to take, and schools, just property line to property line.
Oh, it's a...
I, I agree, I don't know why, but the state law does protect schools closer than churches.
Well, churches typically are open on Sunday mornings, when bars are not. Daycares are typically bring your kids, drop them off, they're inside the premises, as opposed to schools where you may have kids walking to and from the school from home, and then having a bar with what that attracts is a more concern than a, than a contained childcare place where the kids shouldn't be leaving the premises unattended.
Put the Wednesday night maybe.
You know, one church is...
Schools also have nighttime activities, too.
Not town, yeah.
Counsel, are there any, any additional comments, discussions on it?
Let me ask one question. So let's say that we've got a hotel. Hotels have restaurants, but oftentimes hotels have bars. That does... What do we do with regards to a bar in a hotel, which is typically not necessarily a restaurant?
They will still fall under this requirement.
Still fall under the requirement.
Looking at the T A B C food and beverage permit requirement, they still have to serve food, whether they're a bar in the hotel or not. And we can give you more information on that at the second reading, if you like, but that is my understanding that they will still need to serve some form of food.
Yes.
There is typically food in, I recently had one in another town that was a hotel, and the food was much more than the alcohol because of all the room service.
Okay.
It was just a practical matter, it wasn't a requirement.
Let Rashad take a look at it and come back, come for a second reading. Are there additional questions for the staff at this time? If not, I'm going to open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and talk to the council, you may do so. No one is coming forwards, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, again, this is the first reading of the ordinance. This will come back to the council on July ninth, so hopefully Rashad, you'll have the amended language based on the discussion today, and any additional details you want to provide.
Good.
Counsel, again, if you think about additional questions, please let Rashad or Mr. Daniel know. Moving on to agenda, item number five. Again, this is the first reading, this is to discuss the zoning map update. Update the town zoning map and zoning district designations in accordance with the zoning three point zero three dash dot zero two, specifically table twelve of the Unified Development Ordinance. Mr. Jackson?
Mayor, counsel, this actually, I do believe, would only require one reading, being that this isn't a zone change.
Okay.
It's just more so a review, public hearing, let everyone be, be aware of the actual change that was noted in the U D O. In the process of the U D O, we changed the zoning district names, and then we also removed our overlay requirements and made those a part of the zoning requirements for specific corridors. And those corridors are noted in your staff memo as Belt Line, South Collins, the T C Lepton Clay Road corridor, and U S Highway eighty. Let's see, there's one thing I wanted to note. Again, this is not a zone change. I believe that's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counsel, additional questions for Mr. Jackson at this time?
Rashad, the, the area up there in, at Town East and I'd all refer to as Town East and Belt Line, the S F three.
Yes.
Was that S F three on our original map? Or did we change that?
That is S F three on the original map. You're talking the north of, northeast...
I'm talking about the north side of Town East Boulevard.
Yes. A portion of that is S F three, and then a portion of it...
So, um, are we going to be allowed to request one acre lots? I mean, we can always request, are we going to be able to, to enforce the lack... I mean, we can always request, are we going to be able to, to enforce the, uh, like property across the street?
For...
Which is F three, S F three also, but Phase three seven is one acre lots.
Right, Phase seven is the one acre lot portion of the homestead.
So if we have homestead Phase seven and one acre lots, are we going to be able to enforce the one acre lots across the street in that S F three?
If developed according to the standard regulation, they would be required to be one acre lots.
Okay.
I, I do believe they're looking at possibly doing a P D, um, you know, process, but...
Yeah, no, we're going to... Yes, okay, that's good, but... It might, so we can approve this tonight?
Yes, this is just cleanup, nothing's being changed, it's cleanup of the wording. We've got rid of the attached housing designation, now it's S F five multifamily. We have changed industrial to light industrial, lakeside commercials now lakeside, I mean, lakefront district. And all of our planned residential overlays, um, and M P Ds are, in essence, just P Ds now. But I, we still show the designation of the ordinance on the map, so people can still reference where it came from. Other than that, that's...
Okay, let me open up the, I'll, I'll come back to this later, let me open up the public hearing, and this is a public hearing agenda item. If anyone would like to come forward and talk to the council, you may do so. No one is coming forward, so let me close the public hearing. Staff, are there additional comments?
Rashad, is this part of the Unified Development Ordinance itself, it's not considered part of an ordinance change?
See, that's, I spoke with our consultants, Bruce Nichols, and they explained that this should be something that town council can adopt. Now, whether or not it takes two, two hearings, that'd be something different, but it's not a zone change, it's just...
You're not changing zoning, you're just making the map match what's already zoned.
Exactly.
Okay.
So you're not, you're not enforcing anything off of this particular item. It's more of an exhibit based on the current zoning.
Yes.
That's why it only first one.
Okay.
There's no penal consequences off of this.
No, we're not changing the map at all, or the zoning districts at all.
Thank you, counsel. Okay, are there any additional questions for staff? If not, can I have a motion on item, agenda item number five, that is zoning map update? Update the town zoning map and zoning district designations in accordance with the section three point zero three dot zero two, specifically table twelve of the Unified Development Ordinance.
Someone?
More to approve?
Yes.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Finch to approve the, um, the item number five, it's her second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen to approve item number five zoning map update. Update the town zoning map and zoning district designations in accordance with the section three point oh three dot oh two, specifically table twelve of the Unified Development Ordinance. Everyone heard the motion? Any additional discussions, or in favor of the motion signify? All opposed, motion passed six zero. Sorry, seven zero, thank you, thank you very much. Moving on to, um, Development Services, item number six.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Uh, yes.
We created the light industrial district.
Yes.
What happened to the industrial district?
I believe it's just, it's still there.
Where?
The uses are still there.
Okay, but it's not on our zoning map anymore. Is it?
I'm, I'm trying to, it's just a term, the term has changed, but the industrial district is still there, it's just turned to light industrial because, um, at the time...
So if somebody wants to come in and, and build in the, just in the Aston area?
Yes.
Okay, so are they industrial or light industrial?
The zoning district is titled light industrial.
Okay.
Their uses are still industrial in nature, just overall. The, the focus for the comp plan was to transition into less intense industrial uses, business parks, et cetera. So as part of the recommendations that council gave and Penzi gave, the, the term industrial was changed to light industrial.
So there really isn't a industrial district anymore? So did we take anything away when we created light industrial?
Some of the heavy commercial uses were taken away.
Okay. Can some of the old industrial uses still be done in light industrial zoning?
I spoke with our economic development director about this. What was done is the heavy industrial land use classification was removed, and specific land use classifications for those existing uses that are in our industrial district now that are heavy in nature, were given specific titles, tile manufacturing, for instance. It was giving, I believe that's one of our classifications now. Rather than having a heavy industrial land use classification that can be general in nature and we can just figure out the intensity, we have a specific title for those existing heavy manufacturing uses. Which can cause an issue moving forward, but keep in mind, if we have a specific, uh, business that wants to come in, we can amend our land use table again to, uh, at that time, it'd be an extra step, but we could do it that way.
Okay. Okay, moving on to agenda item number six, that's the applicant, application from Matt Atkins, P E Engineering Concepts, for the property located at Route four twenty-nine Tripp Road, north along Robin Ridge Drive and west of Mallard Drive. The request is for final plat, Stone Creek five B, section two. Rashad?
Mayor, counsel, applicant's requesting final plat approval for Stone Creek Phase five B, section two. Preliminary plat was approved by town council in May twenty seventeen, now that construction is complete, section two of the phase, applicant has returned for final plat approval. This section includes thirty lots, which adheres to the standard P R O for the area, Stone Creek P R O, excuse me. There will be a detention open space area where there are a total of twenty-four trees planted along the perimeter of the, of the area in accordance with the requirements for the, for the plat. The applicant, as part of their approval, was, uh, required to contribute escrow in a cost of sixty-five feet, sixty-five point nine one linear feet of trail per lot. There's a, a trail that's, a trail requirement for this phase along the western portion of the phase. And their responsibility for the total fifty lots, this is just section thir, uh, this section is only thirty lots, but total fifty lots in their phase was three thousand two hundred ninety-six. So for thirty lots, that escrow amount would be two thousand three hundred, seven hundred, seventy-three dollars and twelve cents per lot, which equals about sixty-eight thousand dollars. And in, in addition to that, the ordinance four sixty-three requires that the developer contribute eleven hundred dollars per lot for traffic mitigation fees. All these comments will need to be addressed, any pending staff comments will need to be addressed prior to recording of the plat, and fees need to be paid as well.
So the staff and council has ways to, town has ways to, uh, enforce the staff comments?
Yes.
If you approve this one?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, question for Rashad?
I guess the primary question would be, what have we resolved with regards to the trails?
At approval for the overall concept plan, um, and I believe the overall preliminary plat, the applicant was required to escrow or either escrow or construct their portion of that trail. It's a ninety-one hundred linear foot trail for fifty lots, it was determined that, uh, they would be responsible for three thousand two hundred ninety-six linear feet of the trail. The applicant has chosen to escrow, and that's, that's how we move forward with that.
So we're escrowing the money for their portion of the trail?
Yes.
Okay. So when they build the pedestrian access easement, are they building it all the way to the projected location of the trail? Or are they dead ending it there at the end of their property?
You're talking about the little connections in the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Yes, those are constructed, they're dead ending it at the, uh, end of their property, at their property lot.
So we'll have an access easement there that doesn't go anywhere?
Yes.
So what would you project to be the timeframe for getting this ninety-one hundred feet built?
It'd be hard to determine, I think really the main issue would be trying to actually acquire the property so we can have some kind of...
So we don't have the right of way yet?
No.
Of course not.
No.
So we've decided that's a better alternative than the, the, the trip road, road, trip road trail that goes from five A to five B to the school?
Yes, sir.
So is there a time limit on how long we can keep the escrow funds? What if it never gets built?
There wasn't a time limit stipulated in the approval, uh, I don't know legally how long they could be obtained, uh, retained, but in the actual approval, there wasn't a time, time limit.
My main concern is we're, we're building a pedestrian access easement through a neighborhood that doesn't go anywhere. I mean, it dead ends in the bushes.
Right.
Literally. It may dead end at the end of two privacy fences for contiguous lots.
I think this is something that we need to probably focus in on as far as our trail connection issues throughout the town, because our town master plan shows, of course, a, a, a trail, a trail plan, and there's some portions of those, uh, the portion of the routes that we may have some issues with because of property ownership, uh, not having, uh, ability to just do it ourselves.
If, if this never happens, to Jim's point, can we use those funds for another trail, or does it have to be for that trail?
The way it was approved, it would have to be for this trail.
The way what was approved?
Trail on this property, I think you could use it for a trail on a different property.
No. Like if we decided, okay, we're never going to do this, we make it the trip road trail, can we use it for that?
If that trail crosses this property in some way.
Which it would, if we went from that entrance to...
You may have some leeway there, you cannot, definitely cannot use it for all...
For somewhere else, as long as it's benefits this development.
By eighty or something, yeah.
Yeah, benefits the development, we may have some leeway.
You may be able to just look at it, but that space would have to be available to it.
Yeah.
The major concern here is we're building a trail for a neighborhood, we're not building a trail for the town. And that, you know, if we booked it on the trip roadside, we could have a town trail.
Yeah.
But we're actually building a trail inside a neighborhood, uh, connecting to our master plan trail, nothing at the moment, because we don't know if we'll ever build the trail. And they're required to build the trail, required to build the trail. But that's after we acquire the right of way. Sounds a little strange. Well, trip, they already have it. But we're having to buy the right of way to put this trail. They're required trail. It's a little complicated, and it may never happen.
What are the options for town Rashad? To meet the intent and the spirit of what the citizens expect?
At this point, um, being that this is an approved concept plan, um, and they have chosen the option to escrow, I'm not certain that we can go back and make a change to that. And there's no way for them to actually fulfill that intent of our regulations, because they don't own the property, the town doesn't own the property that the trail is supposed to go into. So I don't, I don't, it's really a difficult situation. There was alternatives proposed, um, but at that time, you know, council didn't feel so those alternatives were viable.
Yeah, I mean, we spent a good bit of time discussing this last year and looking at the trip road alternatives, and ultimately, this is what we required and, and approved in the, the concept plan and preliminary plat, if I recall correctly, and they've done exactly what we told them they needed to do. So I don't see how we can change the ground rules on them at, at this point.
So now, a, a question on, um, the trip trail, what was the plan for the trip trail? And if David's correct, if we can use this escrow for the trip trail, you know, is, is that an option to look at?
There was a proposal, there was a proposal to connect, uh, Robin Ridge Drive, provide a trail from Robin Ridge Drive over to the school. Either that, whether it be located along trip, the frontage, near the ditch, or at the back of the lots. If it was located at the back of the lots, um, we would have to obtain an easement from the property owner there. But if it was located toward trip, it could possibly be put in the right of way if there's enough room.
Yeah, I think the concern when we looked at it was with the, the drain, country lane drainage easement, there really wasn't enough room left in that easement to put
Yes.
uh, how six, eight, ten, whatever our preferred paved width trail is, you know, without requiring additional land from those future front yards.
Yes.
Additional questions for staff? Rashad, you want to add anything else?
No.
Okay, see, if there are no additional questions, I can call for a motion. Can I have a motion for the item, agenda item six? That's the application from Matt Atkins, P E Engineering Concepts, for the property located at Route four twenty-nine Tripp Road, north along Robin Ridge Drive and west of Mallard Drive. The request is for a final plat, Stone Creek five B, section two.
I'll make a motion to remove that, or approve that application subject to the, uh, open items noted in the staff letter dated July, June twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen.
Motion made by Mr. McNeil to approve the agenda item, subject to satisfactory completion of staff comments and recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Finch, proposed by Mr. McNeil, and second by Finch to approve the agenda item number six. Everybody heard the motion? All in favor of the motion signify? All opposed, motion passed seven zero. Counsel, moving on to agenda item number seven, that's an application from Ronnie Jones for the property located at Route four twenty-nine Highway eighty. Request is for a site plan, Berean Baptist Church. Rashad?
Mayor, counsel, um, subject property is four point one, zero, four point zero acres in size and was recently platted as the N May under the title Berean Spirit Edition. As we know, this is a location for the future Berean, uh, church site. I will note, before I go into, uh, further detail, there are some pending items that I believe, uh, we need to get addressed prior to moving forward with this application. There are some issues with the, or concerns with public utilities and updates to the submitted plans. Some of the plans that y'all have to review will likely change as a result of these comments, so I'd rather table it until July ninth, so we can get a full review and a full... So, I'd rather table it until July ninth, so we can get a full review and a full revised submittal for y'all to look at. So, and I made the applicant aware of that.
Okay. Applicant is here? Okay.
David Mills, I lead pastor Berean, and we're in agreement with Rashad on this decision.
Thanks for having me here. Already, council, can I have a motion to table the agenda item number seven? That's the application from Ronnie Jones for the property located six twenty highway eighty for a site plan, Berean Baptist Church.
Motion to table.
Motion made by Mr. Clark, second by-
Second by-
-Mr. Finch to table the agenda item number seven. Everybody heard the motion? All in favor, the motion signify. All opposed? Motion passed seven zero. Thank you, pastor. Thank you, Rashad. Moving on to agenda item number eight. That's an application from Jonathan Sparks, Trinity Group International for the property located at turnabout five ten Clay Road. Request is, request is for site plan, Vince Hagan Building. Rashad?
Mayor, council. Subject property is two point six three acres in size and was plotted as lot four with the final plat of the Sunnyvale Center number one addition. This is a proposed office space for the Vince Hagan Company. The property resides directly north of the Flowers Distribution Site, which is directly north of the railroad along Clay. The plan features a thirty-five hundred square foot, one-story masonry building with an articulated facade, front and rear entry. Access will be provided along Clay. Exterior meets the required requirements for articulated facade and brick materials. The builder setbacks are in adherence with these UDO, and the landscaping is in adherence with the UDO as well. Upon further review, staff has recommended that the elevations on the north and south side of the buildings have some additional articulation added, rather than just having articulation on the front entry facing Clay. Applicant has been made aware of that, and they are here to note any, any other questions that y'all might have, to address any other questions y'all might have.
Counsel, any questions for staff? The applicant is here? So, would you say to name and address for the record, and also there's a pink paper at the podium? If you can fill up your information, there's a drop box outside.
All right.
On the way out, if you can drop that off, please.
All right. Mayor, council, I'm Jonathan Sparks with Trinity Group. We are the contractor and developer of this particular site plan and parcel, and we're based out of Frisco, Texas. Is there any questions I could answer?
Yeah, my question is, what are you going to do with this facility? Do we know?
I'm sorry?
What's the plan for this facility?
It is office space for Vince Hagan Manufacturing.
Okay, just office space, not, not the, not the central office, right?
No.
Okay. Counsel, questions for the applicant?
Not to hijack the thread, but Mr. Wade brought up an interesting topic. We actually represent three different clients out there.
Okay.
And a client we're trying to bring into Sunnyvale, and I just called and text two of them. Nobody is aware that they're changing that from industrial to light industrial. And Mrs. Hagan is here, she's the owner of Vince Hagan.
Okay.
And they have plans possibly in the future. They were considering expansion.
Okay.
So, is John Rogers, Performance Pulsation Controls, which we've already designed a building for him, and a third client, we're trying to sell two pieces of property and relocate them onto a parcel in there that Mr. Jackson has. What, how's this going to affect?
So, let me, instead of trying to, I try to explain that when you are thinking about and planning about it, I recommend that you sit down with the staff, get to the staff, Rashad, and talk of what you need to do and what, and let's, let's council and staff work with the applicant.
Okay. What about my clients who've already invested quite a bit of money and time, and they're expanding, and you guys have changed this midstream? You've also changed the UDA in April, right during the middle of our construction process, which has cost us a lot more money to develop this.
Rashad, you want to explain that?
Well, first off, the, the UDO, the land use classifications consolidated some of the industrial uses, but not necessarily prevents what you're doing now. I would, I would suggest looking at the land use chart to verify if your use has continued. If not, please talk to staff and we can, we can see how we can address that, if you have any concerns with future uses. We can always make, try to make an amendment to that land use chart. As far as the, the requirements, the requirements are pretty much the same. There hasn't been any changes with, within the industrial district, other than you may have noted that there was a older requirement that said the brick facades would only need to be applied within three hundred feet of a right-of-way. I believe the change in the UDO does require that brick facade to be, no matter where you're located, along the right-of-way, you would have to have a brick facade.
But that won't affect anything on the interior of the park? That's not on the right-of-way?
Well, I, that's one thing, in the UDO, we've added a alternative compliance request ability in the site plan process, where if it makes sense for you to continue using the exterior material of metal in, in the interior portion of the development, you know, I can't speak for everyone, but I, I don't think that would be something that people would be opposed to. You just would need to make that request.
All right. That's all I have.
The council wants to work with developers, but it's, your approach is to work with the staff first, work with them, understand the requirements, and if there are changes that need to be made, work with them and let them come to the property.
Thank you, mayor.
Would you like to say anything?
I just want to add that I was the mayor when Vince Hagan came to town.
Okay.
They've been an excellent citizen. I know we were a little concerned when they came to town because of what they did, what they looked like, but I delight every time I go down the highway and see one of their pieces of equipment sitting out there. I know where it came from. So, I'm glad they're finally coming with the office to here, and the fact that Trinity's gone and bring some others here, that's why we have an industrial park. I don't know why we differentiate between light and industrial, because we have a lot of property down there on Sine and Larkin. It's always been zoned industrial, and it's not contiguous to residential. So, you need to bring your clients on here and put them in that industrial park, and I think we'll work with you. That's why it's called an industrial park. And I'm glad Vince Hagan's coming with more property. Actually, it fills up a vacant spot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have any to add? Okay, already called. I just want to give you an opportunity, that's all. Counsel, any additional questions or discussions on this topic? If not, can I have a motion on item, agenda item number eight? That is the application from Jonathan Sparks, Trinity Group International for the property located at turnabout five ten Clay Road for the requested site plan, Vince Hagan Building.
Most to approve.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Finch, second by Mr. McNeil to approve the application from Jonathan Sparks, Trinity Group International for the site plans located at five ten Clay Road. Everybody heard the motion?
Subject to the recommendations of staff.
And I thank you very much for the subject to satisfactory completion of the staff recommendations. Everybody heard the motion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed seven zero. Thank you very much. We're looking forward to working with you. Moving on to the assistant town manager portion of the agenda, that is item number nine, to discuss citizen survey. Ms. Black?
Mayor and council, first, let me say that the draft survey prepared in your packet was prepared several months ago, well before the election. I will change the mayor's name prior to distribution. This survey came before some of the council that was here a couple of months ago for their review. They asked that I wait and get feedback from new members of the town council. This draft was prepared after reviewing several samples from other cities that use national firms for citizen surveys. You'll notice that it's not very specific. Part of the purpose of developing a citizen survey is to determine a baseline of citizen satisfaction with your services and what they seem to think that your priorities should be in moving forward and determining projects. So, again, that's part of the reason why it's not as descriptive and, so that we can use it perhaps on a biannual basis to determine if we're improving, if priorities are changing, and those types of things. But staff is happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions for staff?
I think the one point that I've got with regard to the signature of the cover letter, I like to see it as mayor, your, your mayor and town council, because we're all equally concerned about it. The second item is, and I know we're not trying to be too specific, but under item three, traffic and transportation, the first question, I think what happens here is this can, kind of becomes misleading or perception-wise by people who might fill this out. They might see some, they might get discombobulated in what the thought is. First question has to do with traffic flow on state roads, highways in Sunnyvale, parentheses, US Highway eighty, State Highway three fifty-two. I mean, we're, we're identifying them there. And then traffic flow in and around your neighborhood. Well, are we talking about your neighborhood or are we talking about the arterial feeder roads that tie the neighborhoods together and eventually get you to? I would suggest that we add another item in there, push B and C down and make the new B to allow for the arterial roadways such as Beltline, Town East, Collins, Trip Road, Barnes Bridge, because those are arterial feeders, and you're going to get a different response with regard to those arterials than you are going to get with, again, the surface streets within a neighborhood. Just, just a thought to carry through, and I'm just making suggestions. If you go to number five, we talk about timing of traffic signals in the town. The town only really has control over two of the several traffic signals that they, people might encounter. Well, I guess three. The one here at Trip, the one at Creekside. Where was the third one? That is all of them. But yet, people who are traveling and trying to come to and, to and fro through the town, who live in the town, who would be answering the survey, may have some opinion or comment about what goes on on Beltline, which we don't control, we, we have no control over what Mesquite wants to do on their, their parts of the signals.
My, my thought on that was that if we have survey data that shows that people aren't happy with that, that we could at least go to Mesquite and ask for some consideration.
Yeah.
I'm happy to leave, to remove that if you think it causes any-
Sure, and, and that's fine. Again, I'm just somewhat, just kind of looking at things. And then mowing, mowing and trimming along town streets and other public areas, some people don't know what's public and what's private, particularly when it comes to areas of HOA ownership. So, I don't want to get hammered, I don't know how that can be rewarded, but I don't want to get hammered for something that we don't have control over. And maybe it needs to be qualified somehow or another so that, you know, there's got to be, to me, there's got to be some differentiation, and those are just some thoughts that I had.
Rachel, I have a, a comment with regards to demographics. Actually, I have two comments with regards to demographics. One, I'm actually not a very big survey guy after forty years in the government. But, that aside, could we somehow annotate that's optional? Because people could read that, I feel, that there's a chance that people could read that and feel like if I have to fill that data out, then my survey's not worth my town, and they'll not complete that. My second comment is, do we have any? Do we have any expectations of what we think the return on this is going to be? Thank you.
Our face could be, what's the history with this one? Ten fifteen percentage or less?
So, I have a suggestion. So, the plan is to mail this with the water bill? Or is it separately? Separately? Oh, that's what I was going to suggest. Can we, can we do a Survey Monkey or something so it's online? Because people may want to log in and fill it out online, it'll be a lot faster.
So, our website actually has a, a module that we can do to create the survey and collect those responses.
Okay, okay, great.
So, if you're going to do it online, how are you going to keep up with the identification of areas that you talk about with the sticker?
Talk about what? I'm sorry.
The third paragraph of the letter talks about the information printed on the sticker that'll only be used to help identify which areas of the town. So, if you do an electronic version, how are you going to know where it comes from?
I won't unless I just ask the question that they provide, either an address or subdivision.
Just, just ask it. Problem with electronic version is you can get duplicates from the same place, whereas with the mail, you, you generally can't, because you only got one original and one sticker. So, maybe we should do it-
So, in the past, when we've done online surveys, we've collected IP addresses and kind of limited it, but it, to be honest, we haven't had a real issue in the past. I don't know that people are going to fill out this survey five times just for the fun of it. It hasn't been an issue in the past, because we can track IP addresses from the electronic surveys, so we can do that again. And if it becomes an issue, we'll address it.
Again, I don't know, the topics are controversial. I mean, we talked about smoking in the public place versus texting and driving in the area, individual freedoms and all kinds of questions, but these are very generic questions. So, Leslie, your expectation is this will help to set the baseline where we are and, and hope to build some sort of performance metrics? Is that? That's what I read in your mail. Okay. So, what is the action? You just wanted to discuss with us, or it's not an approval?
Wanted to discuss and get your feedback, and I guess kind of a nod to, to move forward.
So, you're getting the feedback?
Yes.
Counsel, the additional feedbacks?
So, just curiosity. We know what that recent brochure costs to mail to the town. What's this going to cost?
Three thousand dollars for this one somewhere?
Well, if the other flyers were five thousand apiece, why would this one be cheaper?
This is just a mailing fee. This is just postage and printing.
You've got to print them. You've got to put stickers on them.
Agreed.
You've got to give a return, a dr, a return envelope.
There's no consulting fee.
No consulting fee. Oh, so it really didn't cost us five thousand to mail them. We paid a consultant.
You're talking about?
Yeah, I am.
You're talking about the, the, okay.
Okay, that answers the question now. The, the ten thousand wasn't from, from mailing and preparation, it was for consulting also. And this has no consultant. So, this is cheaper.
I'm your consultant.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You already pay me.
I'm sorry, you may have already answered this question. Can these be returned in the water mail slot or somewhere other than-
We'll take them anyway, anybody wants to get them back to us.
No, thank you.
I'll come pick them up if you want me to.
And I guess finally, Leslie, in a subsequent newsletter, not, maybe not, it wouldn't be the next one, but maybe two or three newsletters down the road, could we publish the results?
Sure.
Because it's the feedback, I think, when people see that there really is feedback to what the results were. I don't recall in past surveys that I've been a part of, long before I've got involved with being on council or PMZ, that we got results of what the survey said. It was basically what, you know, council sitting up here and saying, well, this is what the results were. But I think the written result that comes back to the citizens is probably more valuable, because they can see how, and it may motivate them for the next time, assuming the next time isn't that next three to six months.
Mr. Hagan, I may add that, you know, if you ask for a survey, ask for people's opinion, when there are opportunities for improvement, I think council needs to take action, I think.
Don't disagree with that.
So, so, adding to what you said, we should, if you're going to have a survey, we not only publish the results, but we also need to pick a handful of areas, maybe two, three, four, five, only we can address everything and put actions around it. Otherwise, it's, it's just a, that's where people lose their heart, right? Especially those walking government for forty years.
Well, and when you consider what happens in government, it takes time to get the wheels going. So, even though we may have agreed to a particular action as a result of the survey, people may not see it for twenty-four months. It's just because of the way the gears work. You know, we're coming up on, I guess, three years now on the roundabout, as an example. So, even though it's not- So even though it's not, you know, everything's not, not all the Ts are crossed and all the Is dotted, you just don't start seeing things for a long time. And if it, if it comes to the infrastructure parts, primarily what's underground, you really don't see a whole lot until the tractors show up and even then you don't even see that much. So getting that feedback, I think, is important.
Very nice. Leslie, we are good? Okay. Counsel, that was the last item on the agenda, the regular council meeting, I should say. Except item number ten, that's the mayor and council request for future staff updates and agenda items. Counsel? The staff, any additional agenda items? Okay. If not, can I have a motion to recess into executive session pursuant to chapter five fifty-one, subchapter D of the Texas Government Court?
So move. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Allen, seconded by Mr. Finch to adjourn into the executive session pursuant to chapter five fifty-one. Agenda item is consultation with attorney. Everybody heard the motion? All in favor of the motion signify, all opposed, motion pass seven zero. We are in executive session at eight twenty PM.
They can wait a little longer.
I'm going to rock it. I know, I was looking, we still got some. And this is a topic I think is very...
Oh, it's blue.
I was going to turn to you. See, now he's...
They did, they did win tonight.
Oh, good, good.
I'm mine, but it didn't work. I did do it. Well, they're, they're planning to determine. Unfortunately, they did.
Which I have very little of.
They were very hard. And I thought that this thing, and...
Sometimes, sometimes it shows up. Oh, I know.
And then the last thing, we brought it in. And paying... Maybe it's a late birthday. My older friend's... Probably, by the time he's four. But he could still be playing football. But they, I'll leave it at that. But anyway, lunch break is, this kid came in, but our kid actually didn't. And then they made some errors and they scored something wrong. I'm sure it's very...
No, but he did it hard, but it was a relief that he did. Good one.
I just... I will say this, I'm no... But I also believe my heart is a thousand... They have been two... These kids are out there, but you would have a hard time finding your heartbeat changed at all. There's emotion, there's drive, there's... And it's just, it's amazing to me. And I know that baseball is serious. I think some of it is their parents bring them and it's like they don't even care. And it's like, no, no, their parents come. But it's like... If this is not what you really want to... And then of course, you know, it's a different world. When I was a kid, you cut the grass. I mean, we can still play there. We make up the...
We played baseball here, 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 here.
With these kids...
Baseball, according to...
Well, I was baseball, we had until we were thirty. We had kids on maybe thirty days of... And that was thirty.
Back to the whole game. Oh, yeah. We had... Well, I would be, I would be, I could be outside.
Absolutely. And no more. But, but what I call... What I call... I did my part, I was playing games.
You did the right thing.
It doesn't hurt, it kind of looks better. You know, if I make a miracle or, you know, whatever. But then what the problem is, it doesn't seem good.
Maybe it does. He go home. He did enough because he needed to stop ruining his games with my, with my...
But what happens is because they... And because the kid, when the ball hits them, they know. Our kids, the ball hits them and they look... You know, and, and that costs you out. Because you're not sure what to do, you're, you're... This is crazy and that's what I, I just hate that about it because the other whole... I don't know if it's bad or they, they want the social part of it, they want to be with their friends or they want to be out there and do some... But also if you do things... But they could be just as happy if they were just going to a picnic or a barbecue.
Oh, oh. I think that's...
I don't know. I think Rockwall is in town.
I have family. I have downtown Rockwall.
It's hard to get there.
It's hard to go there. They, they're trying, it's like going to... They're developing it.
Yeah, they have not. They did it pretty poor job.
And not that many, some more than...
Rockwall, when thirty got built to Rockwall, Rockwall should have had six cars.
What Garland did, what Garland did. What did Norman do to help him?
Well, Garland, they just had trucks.
They had trucks.
But they didn't let the service go.
Well, yeah.
Well, it grew so fast. And, and, you know, Frisco, when Frisco carried on, Frisco didn't know the hell. And Frisco drew eight cars at Rockwall. But they got in early and did the plan. Rockwall got far more... This should not be...
Oh, they now regret what you did.
Well, I think, I mean, I, the latest alignment I saw, I think it would be a ten. But I think... Well, I think when they found that place where it's kind of depressed, where it reduces sound. It's always worth the wait. It's a little further in away from the lake than if we rid the plans, but it's not as far away as one day or... When I say compress... Well, when I say compressed. When I say compressed.
They were talking about. Just.
Right. But it will be somewhat compressed. Where there's at least some.
But there's. So.
Now, I'm not bragging on the line at all. I'm not saying. But I do think that. And this is my. I think Sundayville should make sure that we get. Access to. More. We don't.
Well, that's. Something going on. Too. You. Somebody.
I've heard some people say. You don't think we should have them. Barnacles.
Well, we're.
Very. 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 Barnacles. Is gonna be. My. Way. And I'm like.
Yeah. You. There. You. It's. Something. Talking about. You.
Well. My. My. And I'm. I'm sorry. This is just me. I'm thinking. If I'm coming in dirty. Or I'm coming in. And I'm trying to get it. To be. The county. Small. Whatever. And I pull around one night. Or if I'm coming on. Then. And I think of counties. Or I know. Eight. Or. Sort of. Why they were providing. On.
Yeah. Right.
Why would I? Make that my route? And that's. I mean. Now. And that's because. Barnacles. They're never gonna be. First. Barnacles is always gonna be. Like. Like. There's no right. Where. And I think. The reason why Sundayville ever made any changes. I mean, other than improving the roads.
Right.
But it's part of not wider. Not bigger. Not.
But you.
But. But we need that.
Well.
If we need it for counties.
I was.
It should. Definitely for counties. But also, I think. We want it. And I'm trying to say that is. If the development can happen along the way. You know. You could have a heart.
You think that. Doesn't. You don't know that much.
No, no. I'm saying. Sundayville.
But the people that always said. Well. We wanted. Please.
Well. I don't know.
I didn't. I bet. Got it. How.
I don't know. I mean. I'm just saying. If somebody comes in and offers them. You know. All our money. I don't.
Yeah. Really. Is. I don't.
Did you know?
A guy. We're.
You. You guys know stuff that I don't.
Well. And. Let me tell you. It's. Free. It's.
But even the part, even the part of the mortgage, and the part on the north end of the street, that's all the residential development, like the harbors, that's not. But.
It won't matter, it won't work.
That's just dynamic with our high.
Let me tell you something, how, you know, you have you, we think of. Well, that, what, well, sixteen people are, anyway, they're consistent, and that's how tomorrow will pay off.
Well.
If we do this, do that, and that's what everyone wants, I don't believe.
And the minute when it's ready, I want to hear all the justice that's been given. And the minute when it's ready, I want to hear all the justice that's been given. And again, I think that would be the same regardless of who is the president. And again, I think that would be the same regardless of who is the president. I think the town would love to regret. I think the town would love to regret.
But the, but the, but the, but the difference, that's what I'm saying, the difference is large, huge, so that. But the difference, that's what I'm saying, the difference is large, huge, so that.
Well, when I say Sunnyville, literally, I'm talking about when they offer community for commercial development. Well, when I say Sunnyville, literally, I'm talking about when they offer community for commercial development.
Well, like Tom, Tom. Well, like Tom, Tom.
Getting high, high dollar property tax. Getting high, high dollar property tax.
We had a woman, we had a lady, we had a lady who was from the show, and I feel, and we weren't in it. We had a woman, we had a lady, we had a lady who was from the show, and I feel, and we weren't in it. And her work was incredible, too, too. And her work was incredible, too, too. And Tom was along with his wife, he was in the house, and they were. And Tom was along with his wife, he was in the house, and they were. And that's what we were, yeah, and the committee, he felt someone, he really, and I don't think, I mean, I feel like this. And that's what we were, yeah, and the committee, he felt someone, he really, and I don't think, I mean, I feel like this.
Well, that's what he's saying, he's saying, when they all, group is not gonna ever. Well, that's what he's saying, he's saying, when they all, group is not gonna ever. Or the committee's trying to help everybody with the kids, didn't I? Or the committee's trying to help everybody with the kids, didn't I?
Well, well, we know, most of the people, no, but when, when the meeting was there, I knew, uh, if you didn't want access, or if you had more people, you had to, uh, Well, well, we know, most of the people, no, but when, when the meeting was there, I knew, uh, if you didn't want access, or if you had more people, you had to, uh, before you exactly, I don't think, yeah, because I think people come, they're like, so the people will, he's always there to get home. before you exactly, I don't think, yeah, because I think people come, they're like, so the people will, he's always there to get home. And they have their shop, or they'll go there, but they like to keep something that's, I don't know, like, uh, probably. And they have their shop, or they'll go there, but they like to keep something that's, I don't know, like, uh, probably.
It just starts. It just starts. The horror of men gets worse. The horror of men gets worse.
That is true, there you go. That is true, there you go. When are we gonna come alive? When are we gonna come alive?
God, he's working. God, he's working.
That's the problem with the mortgage, they waited on the main. That's the problem with the mortgage, they waited on the main.
They had electric meter for the new. They had electric meter for the new.
Boy, is that an issue with the, the last one, Sam? Boy, is that an issue with the, the last one, Sam? I don't know what these, uh, or those were. I don't know what these, uh, or those were. My wife, there's one, a big black. My wife, there's one, a big black. When they were on the two meter meter, they come in on that one night, that's the new one, it looks great, then when they took a real meter in, it started running all the time. When they were on the two meter meter, they come in on that one night, that's the new one, it looks great, then when they took a real meter in, it started running all the time. There's a dark thing, what it looks like is glass that are shining, and you know, and just, or meat's not, and you're shining. There's a dark thing, what it looks like is glass that are shining, and you know, and just, or meat's not, and you're shining. And John, you have a thing, it's got it. And John, you have a thing, it's got it.
Not a knife. Not a knife.
I don't see it very often. I don't see it very often. Well, my husband drives every night, so he does something. Well, my husband drives every night, so he does something. And he, I mean, I'm just gonna sit down. And he, I mean, I'm just gonna sit down.
I don't know why, I'm, 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 I'm a little bitter. I don't know why, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bitter.
If we do this, do that, and that's what everyone wants, I don't believe.
But it also. Now, time is nine oh seven, let, uh, I called reconvene into the regular town council session of June twenty fifth. At this time, I can confirm that there are no actions out of the executive, uh, session. With that, uh, again, uh, I'm going to adjourn the meeting of the regular town council meeting of Town of Sunnyvale for June twenty fifth. Time is nine zero seven. Good night.
See you ladies, see you Sajie. Thursday?
Ladies? Is it Thursday?
Bye, see you Thursday.
The task leave?
Probably, he touched out pretty quick, so he gets ready to go home.
Oh, my goodness, yeah, he gotta head out all the way to Fort Worth.